But a cold front just offshore will bring rain to the coast in the Olympics through two.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, November 7th, and this is a regular Moscow City Council meeting. Welcome all. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. The interminable campaign season ends shortly, and I would like to encourage each and all of you who haven't already voted to please do so tomorrow. And with that, would you rise and join the mayor and council with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. The next order of business is I have a Veterans Day proclamation that I would like to read to everybody. Veterans Day proclamation, whereas November 11th is the anniversary of the Armistice signed by the Allies and the Germans in 1918, which ended World War I after four years of conflict, and whereas President Woodrow Wilson issued the first Armistice Day proclamation in November in 1919, and set the tone for future observations by observing that, to us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nation. And whereas, the name was changed from Armistice Day to Veterans Day by an act of Congress in 1954, when then-President Eisenhower called on citizens to observe that day in honor of all those who have served in America's wars throughout the years. And whereas, more than 131,000 veterans of our nation's military reside in Idaho, and almost 5,000 of them live here in our area. Whereas, the Veterans Assistant Program of the University of Idaho is committed to helping student veterans and their dependents succeed, and whereas, our nation is indebted to the service men and women who have made great sacrifices, endured long absences from loved ones, and suffered injury or death to protect our homes and families. And whereas, Idaho National Guard 126th Engineer in Moscow were organized and federally recognized on April 26, 1929, as Troop K, 116th Cavalry, an element of the 24th Cavalry Division. And whereas, through many designations and periods of active federal service with a campaign credited in World War II, and most recently as part of the 116th Engineer Battalion, mobilized to support Operation Iraqi Freedom, the 126th Engineers have served their community and their country. And whereas, Veterans Day is an opportunity to honor our nation's veterans and the 126th Engineers for their sacrifices. Now therefore, I Bill Lammert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2016, as Veterans Day in the city of Moscow, and I urge all citizens to reflect upon the sacrifices made by Americans, military personnel, to preserve and promote enduring peace around the world. And with that, I have retired Lieutenant Colonel Bob Eisenberg and others to meet me up here for this proclamation. Please come up here and go ahead and.
Oh, look at that. Yep, you can stare right at her. I would like to thank the mayor, the council, and the staff for remembering the veterans. It's always a sad time of year for me when we think about it, but I appreciate that you're all remembering the sacrifices we've made so that we can continue this great nation and this great city.
Hi, I'm Luke Sprague, and I'd just like to reinforce Bob's comments. Veterans who are here, there's probably some more in the room, thank you for your service. I know, I appreciate it, and as a third-generation veteran, I know it's a huge, huge sacrifice. Some of us, some people, you know, it's hard to grasp unless you've actually been through it. You've been away from your family, you've been downrange. It's interesting. So I appreciate you all taking time out for us, and hopefully you can have some time off Friday and come and join us. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, before you leave, I'd like to make an address, and I will be there on 11th to join all of you and the vets and our families, because I look forward to it. Walter led the pledge earlier this evening and had talked about voting, and one of the things, if it wouldn't be for the decades and decades and decades of our veterans, we wouldn't be voting tomorrow. We'd be doing something other than that. And so it's because of our service, men and women, that make this nation great and allow us to have those freedoms to be able to do that. So thank you very much for your service. I will be delighted to see both of you on the 11th.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
I'd like to pull Item C, please.
Okay, make it be noted that Walter would like to pull Item C on the consent agenda. Walter, you got the floor on it.
Item C, Mr. Mayor and council, is to take a look at a March 2015 city application for a bus and bus facility grant funding application to the Idaho Transportation Department. Subsequently, the city was awarded $208,500 for various transportation enhancements, and the item on the agenda tonight is to approve the first of these, a 15-passenger van pool van for $35,000. Included in the packet tonight, in case anybody else saw it, was a list of the other items that will ultimately be awarded, and one of those was a single bus shelter to the tune of $121,000. I had to, no, I just had to ask, what does a prefab bus shelter cost and how much of its labor to install it? It turns out that's nothing but a typo. There were actually six of them for $121,000, but I wanted to set the record straight before somebody happens to see that and we get credit for a $121,000 bus shelter. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve item, the consent agenda, including Item C.
Okay, we got a motion by Walter and a second by John to approve the consent agenda with a correction on item number C. I will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, thank you, Walter, and we will move on to the next thing, which is Staff Recognition Report. Gary Redner, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item of staff recognition this evening, and that is that Jesse Flowers, our Information Systems Director, has successfully achieved his Prima certification. That's the Idaho Public Risk Management Association. It is a certification that will assist Jesse in keeping risk to a minimum, reducing possible public liability exposure, and thereby reducing insurance claims and insurance costs. He's in a class of 47 individuals who became certified during this time period. So he, I believe, is our third Prima certified employee, and he's a member of our risk management team. So congratulations to Jesse.
And he is, Jess is not here with us this evening. You know, I got to make a statement about that. Anytime we have employees in our city that work extra hard, get certificates of not only accomplishments for what their profession is, but continue to enhance their profession enhances our entire city and our whole staff. And I'm, as the mayor, I am extremely proud of all those individuals that continue to do that, because it's a continuing process. You are frequently up here telling us these things, and it brings joy to my heart because it's a big deal for us. It makes our staff professional, helps with costs for our citizens, and just makes things run smoother. So I wish he was here so we could give him a round of applause, so we'll have to gorge him or something at the holiday event that we'll have in December, Gary. Can we, can we do something to draw some recognition?
We can do something. As the Information Systems guy, he can certainly watch the replay.
Well, we can kind of keep, well, what we can do, well, we'll just won't share with him what we're going to do, and let's surprise him at that function. What do you think of that idea?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to mayor's appointments, and I have one that I want to bring forward to the council, a high school student, the young lady, Ari Carter, for the human rights position. This is a high school, non-voting seat for the Human Rights Commission. I'm really tickled to death to bring her name forward, and I'd look forward for a favorable vote on her.
I would move approval of Ari's appointment.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve Ari Carter for the Human Rights Commission. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
Aye, and I was just curious, isn't Ari a guy?
I think it's a girl.
Okay.
If I made a mistake, I'm so sorry.
Is he in 11th grade?
I have no idea. He's in high school, that's all I can tell you. So if, Ari, if you're out there watching.
Sorry, aye. Sorry.
Aye.
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 One thing about it, I got one of them right, so there you have it. Anyway, that really tickles me to death to have high school kids that get involved with our various commissions. I think that's a big deal, so.
I think.
With that, we will move on. Okay, next item is item number four, Public Comment and Mayor's Response Period, where we allow 15 minutes for folks that want to speak to us on any issue, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda or something in this front of Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustments. And I will give each person three minutes. You must state their name and let us know what's on their mind. It's the eve of the vote tonight, so we don't have any folks here, so they're watching politics on TV or something. Okay, well, we'll move on to item number five, which is Citizens Commission Report, Tree Commission. David Schott, sir, you have got the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to give the annual Tree Commission Report this year. Nils Peterson will be giving the report tonight, but I'd like to introduce him. As many of you know, Nils Peterson has been involved with a number of civic activities over the last two decades. He helped found the Palouse Prairie Charter School. He served on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He also holds a degree in architecture and is now the Executive Director of the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust. Many of you know that he has an interest in heavy timber construction. He's built several timber frame structures around town, the barn, and he's also built the picnic shelter at Berman Creekside Park. Since he retired from WSU in 2011, he's turned his passion for wood into passion for the Tree Commission, and we've done some great things. We've got a wonderful group, Nils Peterson, our chair, David Rock's here as well from our Tree Commission. We've got a very passionate group and doing some good things. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nils Peterson for our presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, Nils.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you, David, for a kind introduction. Just a reminder of the Tree Commission's mission statement, to plan, establish, and help conduct a comprehensive community forestry program. And I think you'll see tonight that we have many elements of a comprehensive program going on, and our goal is to help ensure, enhance the quality of life for those who live and work here. Members, Patrick Fecetti, Vice Chair, Mary Jo Hamilton, Secretary, then you can see the others as well, and special thanks to David Schott, recognition that he jumped in last year, not only nine months ago, and has been a great assistance to the committee, so thank you very much. The term "green infrastructure" was introduced to us by David Rock, and I think it's an important way to think about the city's forest. And I think about the forest, both the publicly-owned portions and the portions that are privately-owned, they're intermingled. Interestingly, the benefits in that list are ordered kind of from most civic and big importance down to least civic and most personal, you know, property values being, being something that is more pertains to the individual than it does to the city itself. There's been a very recent study, I think it was done in Montreal, on public health, and finding that street trees, not trees in general, not trees in backyards, street trees made a significant impact on the health of the residents of the city of Montreal, even when they controlled for income and other demographic factors. So it's important to think about that as a broad community value. I went back and looked at the 2014 citizen survey, where we asked citizens, which things do you value about trees? They go up the list from the bottom. Property values was the most valued thing from citizens' perspective, and stormwater mitigation was in there, sort of in the middle of their list, and I can't remember what the bottom one was, but it was kind of upside down from this list. So it's interesting to think that we have a, an education component to help the community understand the municipal value of the forest. This is part of it. Every year, we do the Arbor Day outreach. Mayor comes and reads the proclamation. We try to work with the school to do something around the planting of a tree, and it's the kickoff then for our sapling giveaway, which we do. Some go to children in schools many years, and then others go to the community. So we had a great event again this year. I was unfortunately quite sick and wasn't there in the crowd, but it's something that I think that is broadly appreciated. Then more public outreach that we're doing. We used to go to the county fair once a year, and we shifted up and don't go to the county fair anymore, are going to farmer's market and sharing things that the commission is working on, and I think we connect with more Moscow people that way. The county fair has a different audience, and they're there with different motivations in those booths. So this seems to have been working better, and we've done it a number of years in a row now. Two years ago, we started going to the Historical Society Ice Cream Social. Gets a different cross-section, and decorating tree cookies is, you know, a popular activity amongst the younger set, but it also gives us a chance to put out literature and talk to the community about trees. This year, we tried something new. PCEI runs a Halloween event, which is animals of the night, and so we went with trees of the night and tried to enter children in spooky silhouettes and shadows, but being right across from the wolf display, not many children paid much attention to what we were doing, but it was actually kind of good because it sorted the kids from the parents, and I was able to talk to parents as the kids were petting wolf pelts. So that worked out. Other public outreach that we've been doing, and this is really another thanks to staff. Several years ago, we started a fruit tree pruning workshop, and it was really the initiative of the commission itself to figure it out and kick it off. But in this last year now, the idea that we should have several things in the Parks and Rec catalog of different kinds of offerings aimed at different audiences. So you see that this last year, we've had a much bigger listing than just the fruit tree pruning. We've had some other activities in fall pruning, going to do two kinds of fruit tree pruning this coming spring, separating the audience into those with stone fruits like cherries and plums and peaches versus those with palm fruits like apples and pears. The pruning is different when the audiences overlap. It makes it more difficult for the instructor. We think we have enough uptake now to actually have two separate classes. So you can look for that in the Parks and Rec catalog that will come out in December. We have been working on a variety of tree issues, providing direct recommendations to various entities. The image is really about the bottom one, the sidewalk accessibility concern. There are several places in town, but this is the one that we explored. The stairs and that tree well are fairly close together and make a difficult place to try to navigate between. So then comes the balance of how do you solve that problem? Cover over part of the tree well, remove the tree, et cetera. It's, you know, so it's a topic that came to the commission to work on. The other one, the top of the list, the new street trees at Gritman's new building, was an opportunity to open a conversation about how do we want to think about street trees as we get a fairly tall building fairly close to the sidewalk, and what is the remaining space and what should the trees be like? Should they be tall and columnar? Should they be just little dwarfs? So it was a chance to begin to formulate some thinking to guide other kinds of situations like that that may arise in the future. So then let's talk about work in progress. David, did it happen today? Did the Trivoy Way signs go in?
Got the pads of concrete poured.
Concrete's poured?
It'll be in by the end of the week.
Okay. This has been a long-running saga. Along Trivoy Way, between Steiner and Blaine Street, on Paradise Path and Trivoy Way, there's a strip, a green strip, which has a Vista power lines overhead. And a decade ago or so, a Vista came through on its proposed to prune and remove, and there was quite an outcry from some of the neighborhood, and work between the Tree Commission and a Vista came up with a strategy for how to manage that to maintain more of the green belt and the density of the green belt. And these signs are information for the community about that agreement and the strategy, what the conflict is between tall-growing trees and high-tension lines, how to think about managing them, what is being done now. Some of the trees were girdled, so they died to provide habitat for insects and birds. Some were removed, some have been topped. It's a way to understand what's happening in that space. So I'm very glad to see that this is coming to the end. I think you'll like to see it as you go along the path there, the Paradise Path between Steiner and Blaine. We're also working on a revised street tree planting program for new construction. You can see many neighborhoods that we have new subdivisions, and they didn't get planted out with trees. And the mechanism that was imagined and invented back about 2000 just hasn't been very successful, so we've been working with planning and zoning, and we'll be bringing forward some amendments to the city ordinance that will help, we think, with getting trees planted around new construction projects. The tree planting in established subdivisions, again, going through the 2014 citizen survey, the other big question that the commission had asked was, what do the citizens want? And they wanted more trees planted, and they identified in new subdivisions than they identified amongst existing ones. And so we're working on how to think about the infill and ultimately replacement of our forest, and I'm pointing up here into the Fort Russell, where that forest is now getting fairly mature. And that also connects to the work that's really done by staff in this case, the Tree Risk Assessment Project. First, a city intern and then an external consultant went out and walked block after block and did an identification of trees, that trees that may need pruning or removal, and just assessing that risk of the street trees, again, not of private trees. And so we have a fairly good idea now of the risk that the city faces in terms of the standing trees, but that also tells us about where we can think about some of the replacement and rejuvenation of the older parts of the forest. Other piece that connects to that, the community-based observing. Let me explain that a little bit. So the tree risk was really a recognized need by staff to go out and look at every tree. Community-based observing is an idea that we're trying to explore in collaboration with the U of I. Is there a way for citizens to report tree-related issues on a tree-specific basis that then could, oh, we're starting to see birch tree borer here, or we're starting to see this, or I'm seeing a lot of dead in the top of the maple trees on my block, or whatever it might be? And that then that would be a way to call to more professional attention to think about those. So we're seeing if there's a project that we can do along those lines. And then planning for street tree replacements downtown, the conversation about Gritman would be at one end, how do we think about new trees? But then the other is, when you look at the trees along the bulk of Main Street, you see some of them are failing, and how do we think about that transition? Probably a multi-year process of asking that question and getting the right kind of budgeting and planning through the council so that we could actually, do we change the wells underneath the trees to make them more spacious, bigger pots? Do we change the species? Do we replace the whole city block at once? Or do you take them out one at a time? Lots of questions to be resolved there, but that's a project that we're thinking about working on. At any rate, so, thanks to the mayor and the commission and the staff, and I'll take some questions or comments.
Well, it's always fun, Nils Arbor Day. I always look forward to that. Like you said last year, you were sick and missed it, but David filled in for it and did a great job, so.
And it was poor and rain.
Yes, it was. It was okay, because Jim and Art and I were out there. Walter?
Nils, where is the tree and step conflict located?
That is on the corner of Third and Jackson on the southeast.
Okay.
The building is green and with orange window trim.
Yeah. And then, secondly, if I may, it may be premature, but are the trees that we have downtown the best kind of tree to have downtown?
That's.
I hate to park downtown and, and get my car just covered in little tiny, tiny leaves about three months of the year, or four or five. Is that a really good tree for a downtown, or is there something better out there, you think?
I think that's an important question. You're parking in one section of it. There's also where you can get the acorns to slide your feet on and the bigger oak leaves on your car. So there's a, there are some, we're running some experiments, if you will, in different blocks. We have different sorts of things. I don't think we intended those experiments, but now we need to ask exactly your question. And what, trees do shed something. Which sheddings do we more tolerate or less tolerate?
Don't get the ones that put all the gummy stuff on your car. That's even worse.
The gummy stuff is a bad, yeah, right.
But I had, I had a gentleman email me several months ago about a proposed tree to be used downtown, and about three months later, he said, oh, it's doing so-and-so. I take it back. Don't use that for whatever you do.
It's going to be a balancing act to find the right mix of things, and certainly some of those concerns, like what does it drop on the cars? How tolerant is it to growing in those harsh conditions in the small pots essentially, et cetera?
But on the flip side of that, looking downtown, having the trees are very, very nice. Considering what it would be before that, because I remember the day before we ever put any trees in, and it was pretty blasé, just cement and asphalt.
And I think that Gina will tell you that there are business advantages to having a tree-lined Main Street over not.
Absolutely.
Well, and you have, you know, and we have like the light-up parades and things like that at night. We had that night function where we had the block party recently, and the lights were all, and the trees were all lit up, and it really gave you a very nice feel for the downtown area that evening.
I know it's not downtown, but on D Street where the crosswalk went in by the middle school, they put in trees and they, I went down the night before they opened, and I think it was Scott that was there anyway, and so I had a big conversation with him about the trees and all the decisions that they made to, to put in the proper tree for that intersection. And I don't know if you've talked with him or not, but he was, I got tons of tree information. It was great, and I got to have a look at the depth of the, the pots that they put those trees in and all that kind of stuff.
And that was Scott Becker from Hodge?
No, it wasn't Scott Becker. Bon Trager.
One of our guys.
Yeah. He was, he was great to talk to and talk about where they got the trees from and how much they cost and, and just tons of stuff, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Other questions for Nils? Well, Nils, thank you very much for the wonderful report, and keep up the good work with the Tree Commission and as well as the two days back there. We appreciate the work you guys do.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is engagement of the financial advisor for our proposed bond election that we're looking at. Gary Redner will present to us.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can I catch the light, Ron? Thank you. What you have before you tonight is the next step in our preparation for a presentation to city council of a package for proposed public safety and infrastructure to be financed through a general obligation bond. As you recall, during our strategic planning process, which amazingly enough tonight, you'll get an update as to where we are with those processes, but one of the things the council wanted to look at were addressing major challenge areas, some of which included the police station, fire apparatus, street condition, park development, and downtown infrastructure, to name a few. So those were both internal and external issues. So during the budget process, we proposed that several things should occur. One was to seek out information as to addressing those MCAs and additionally, how we could pay for those. As we went through the budget process, we threw out some numbers. As we went through the budget process, we threw out some numbers that would give us a leg up to start addressing those issues, construct a new police station, purchase new fire apparatus, so on and so forth. The preliminary number was in the $10 million range, and so that is what staff has been working on. Since that time, we have, as I've reported in the past, we have formed technical advisory committees for each of those elements of proposed infrastructure and emergency services. We have also put together a finance technical advisory committee and a public outreach and information technical advisory committee, all of whom are working diligently to try and get a proposal to City Council for City Council consideration. Should be wrapping up a lot of it in December, and then in January, we will come to the council with proposals, asking for the council to give direction and feedback on several issues. Some of that includes which bond issue, or which projects you wish to pursue, how we would go about doing that, the amount of the issue, so on and so forth. So that will be forthcoming. One of the things we do to prepare for a bond issue, you have to have certain legal things that need to be met, so we hire a bond counsel, an attorney who is specialized in the issuance of municipal debt. We are utilizing Danielle Quaid from Holly Troxel in Coeur d'Alene. Danielle has helped us with our last two bond issues, one of which was a refinance of sewer bonds back in 2010, or 11, excuse me. So we have experience with her, so we will be utilizing her services. The second professional that we need to employ is a financial advisor. And a financial advisor covers a lot of the same things, the nuances and preparation, reporting, calculations, scenarios, all of those sorts of things for a issuance of general obligation debt. So we did an informal solicitation of qualifications. They were sent out to three known folks who do this sort of thing, Piper Jaffray and Boise, Zion's Bank, and Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo decided that they did not want to participate because they have hopes that they might be able to help us with the financing part, and if you are acting as a financial advisor, you cannot act as the underwriter as well. So they were more interested in hopefully proposing some financing at the end of the process. We considered the two from Zion's and Piper Jaffray. We put together five people to assist with that, two of whom, as noted in the CCSR, have been on the issuance side of public debt on behalf of Lewis Clark State College and University of Idaho. Brian Foysey, who's the Vice President for Finance at the U of I, and Ron Smith, who is Special Assistant to the President for Lewis Clark State College. At the end of that, it was determined that Eric Harringer at Piper Jaffray had, was the selected person for the process. Piper Jaffray has assisted us in the past. They helped with that reissuance of sewer bonds, the refinancing of that, and they have experience in multi-project bond issues, which was something that we were very impressed by. One of the things that we will look at when putting together, putting together a proposal for City Council consideration is, when you have a single project bond issue, it's very easy to put out public information on that. When you have a multi-project bond issue, it essentially, in this case, will perhaps quintuple the amount of effort in order to get enough information out on each of these projects. So we're looking for some advice as well as to, is this a good idea? What are the chances that we will be successful? Are there things, techniques we can employ to try and give us a better chance? And finally, to run the scenarios, the financial scenarios, everybody asks, I have a $225,000 home, what is the tax burden going to be on me if this election goes through? He will assist us in doing that. Also assist us in determining which is the best financing vehicle, whether it is a single purchase, such as a loan from a bank, or is it the issuance of bonds to the market, where you actually sell bonds in the open market? So those services will be provided by Piper Jaffray, should we get the council's approval tonight. You'll see that the contract is included in your packet, that contract, and pricing in the market is just about the same for each of them. It's $20,000 is the minimum charge, $2 per thousand of issuance, with a top end of $60,000. We don't intend on going for a $30 million bond issue, so that isn't a concern. However, it is contingent upon the successful issuance of the debt. So if we are unsuccessful, then we do not pay that money. So what we're asking is for the council to approve the agreement, and we will move forward. I do have a preliminary meeting with both bond counsel and the financial advisor at the end of next week. So we didn't have a chance to get this through committee and get it to council in time for us to move that forward, so that's why it's coming to you tonight with the fifth Monday in October. It created a logistical issue, so I asked the mayor for authority to come directly to you, and that's why you're seeing it for the first time in your packet tonight.
Okay, Gary, one of the things, a couple of things from my point of view that, of course, are important, that the public will want to know, is, number one, what are we going to use the money for in defining that? We've talked about that amongst ourselves, and of course, as we get that out. And you touched on this a little bit, exactly what is it going to cost me for, if I have a $200,000 house, $250,000 house, $300,000 house, what can I expect to be paying a per year? And I think those are the two most important things that people are going to be asking that we're going to be having to talk about, because that's what people are concerned with. If they know that we're doing this for the things that we need as part of our infrastructure and building our infrastructure and maintaining the things that we need to maintain, whether it be the streets and fire department and police stations, so on and so forth, I think people get that. But I'll leave it open for questions for Gary. Well, Catherine?
My question is, you know how we have the strategic, you know, plan of the things we're supposed to do? But I think sometimes there's, along the line of what the mayor's saying, that people will think there's this bond election, so you've had this big list, can we kind of pick the things that we want? And so are we, are we going to offer, like, we think we can get these things done through this bond because? Is that what?
There will be a very large element of public information. The selection of the particular projects to be addressed in a potential bond issue were selected by the City Council as we provided information. And again, the direction was flesh this out, show us what it looks like, bring it back, and at that time, we will determine, council will determine which ones to proceed with. So a lot of it is logistical as well. For instance, the police station is a standalone building. The police are the only ones in that building, so that provides us certain things we can do. As you also know, there was a consideration of a Public Works building on our current city shop site, which is a much larger issue. It serves, I believe, three or four different departments, including one outside of Public Works, that would be Parks and Rec Shop. So it's a much bigger deal. So putting that together in time, although we are developing, and there had always been plans to develop a scoping and estimate on that, that is, we will bring it forward, but it'll probably be something that the council decides, maybe this is something we need to address in a different way. Haven't considered that yet, but we're bringing all options forward. But there are a lot of, a lot of moving parts to it. As you know, from reading the water and sewer comprehensive plan, the city's facilities plan, Parks and Rec master plan, we can use probably half a billion dollars and not address all of the issues that if we were going to replace all the aging sewer infrastructure, develop all the parks, resurface all the roads, so on and so forth. So we also have to look at it from the perspective of what is the most bang we can get for our buck? If we have limited amount of funds and we apply them in a very systematic fashion, how can we make the largest impact on those major challenge areas? And that's what we've tried to address in this case.
As we're going along, too, just to be noted, there's got to be a starting point for something, and this is our starting point. And as we're going along, as I see it, these things are going to be kind of an ongoing thing, Catherine, as we go through, if we get our 10-year bond passed, you know, eight years down the road, we'll be looking at another one or the next council, whoever, and it's all about infrastructure and maintaining our city where we're going. And I think that's going to have to be an ongoing thing from now until whenever.
Yeah, if I may, also, there are, as you know, having been through the budget process, there are, there are significant, fairly unique challenges in Moscow because of the fact that so much of the property is tax-exempt, that we're unable to accumulate a lot of capital in any one time to go ahead and do these big projects. So that's also part of the public education process, that we'll be able to lay out why it has to happen, and hopefully the community will look at it and say, yeah, we do need to address these issues, and we need to support this project.
Yeah, and I know you've thought about that. I guess it's because there's so much internal infrastructure on the city side, the citizens only get to see the streets, right? They only get to...
Well, unless you go to jail.
So it's that, that whole thing of they don't get to, they don't get the, they just think, well, they're just taking care of themselves. You know, that's the hardest thing in trying to have them see that the infrastructure piece actually takes care of them.
You bet.
You know, and I know you've considered that, but it's, it's sometimes a difficult one to explain.
It is, and that's why we put some of our best people on the public information piece of it.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, compensation, I'm reading from the agreement, is contingent on the size of the bond. We get that, $2 per thousand of the power amount. But then it goes on to say, and contingent on closing.
Yes.
If the bond doesn't pass, or we cannot place it once it's passed, they don't get paid?
Exactly.
Why would they agree to that?
Because they have a pretty good success rate, and they understand that...
I could, I could give you a personal comment, but I won't go there.
Walter, it's interesting, both of the firms that we solicited had the same, I didn't see the other firm's contract, but it was the same basic, and that is that they get paid contingent upon the, on the successful bond issue.
Okay.
That's a good deal for us at the City of Moscow.
Gary, I have to, I have to make one other comment, if I might. You're, you're right, we have a fairly large amount of untaxed property in Moscow. However, if we didn't, we probably wouldn't have a town over about 5,000 people, and it'd be another farm town on the Palouse.
Precisely.
So there's, there's value in untaxed property in Moscow.
Absolutely. Don't mean to say there isn't. It just creates some fiscal challenges.
John, did you have a?
Well, I just would make a move, pardon me, a motion that we approve Financial Services Agreement with Piper Jaffray to provide financial advisor services for the proposed bond election.
I'll second it. Okay, I'll give Jim the second. John made a motion with Jim's second to approve the Financial Services Agreement with Piper Jaffray to provide financial advisor services for the proposed bond election. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, well, we've got direction there.
Thank you.
Gary, very good. Next thing on the order is Strategic Plan Updates, and Jen Pifner will be, and Gary will be...
Yes, I'm just here to introduce the, the subject, Your Honor. Jen's been working hard. As you know, you've all been through the strategic planning process with us. As I mentioned very quickly, and she will reiterate, it was pretty systematic, it was a long process, and we promised to come back and inform you where we were with those things. As you'll see from Jen's presentation, we've had very good success in a lot of areas. Some areas are lagging behind the schedules that we'd originally moved forward. Reasons for that are the same that those occur in folks' lives, and that is you have issues come forward that take time. We have limited staff resource, resources, so on and so forth. So in some of these, you'll see revised timelines and explanations for why they haven't moved forward. So just wanted to give you a report. We're about ready to enter a new calendar year. We just started a new fiscal year, so we wanted to give you an update as to where we are. So with that, Jen's done a lot of work on this. She is kind of shepherding the process along, and I think you'll find what she has to say interesting.
Hi, Jen.
Good evening. Get this turned on.
There we go.
Perfect. So the overview Gary just provided with the Piper Jaffray discussion leads really well into this, as we talk about our major challenge areas, how that a lot of those issues are the items that we'll be talking about in the potential bond initiative, and so we'll go through each of those. And I will start with a little bit of a history on the strategic planning process, just because it has been a bit. We wrapped the final draft of our strategic plan in November of 2015. That process began by going back to our mission, making sure it was the statement that we wanted it to be, and it, in fact, does meet our needs, and this is still our goal, and meets the, the desirability of what we're looking to do as a city. The values came together through the strategic planning process and really speak to collaboration and partnership, integrity, honesty, providing service to our citizens, and those different types of things. So they're echoed quite a bit throughout the goals and objectives, and just the, the operational overviews as well. That's the piece where it talks about what we do day in and day out. So those two items were a couple of the big ones right off the bat, and thankfully, the mission was right where we needed it to be, and we were able to move forward from there. So I'll talk about some of the driving forces and trends, priorities, things like that, that we dealt with as we put together the strategic plan. I'll back up just a second as well. When we put the plan together, we started with our teams from each department or division, and it was, it included folks from all levels of the organization, so from the bottom to the top and everywhere in between, because we were really looking for that professional outlook for 20, 30 years, as our consultant kept saying, you know, what's on the horizon out there? What do you see coming at us? So we brought together a little bit of everybody to get through that plan. That led us to some of the driving forces and trends, and the three biggies that we saw as categories were the tax, tax, tax implications, excuse me. And that included things like, we talked about resources not caping pace with service demands or infrastructure demands that we have. Also, enrollment and unemployment in our community were two of the things that we knew were driving forces for us that we needed to keep in mind. Next came a discussion of desired legacies. What did we as council and staff want to leave behind from our perspectives? And the consensus really came together around some of these items listed here, and really talks about, as we, as I mentioned with that value statement, vitality, collaboration, harmony, professionalism, and continuous progress as we continue to plan for the future. We also found there was a profound commitment to conservative values, prudent planning, careful execution, which is really, I think, related throughout this entire process, even as we led up to the strategic planning process in particular, as I'll speak to about our other planning efforts in a moment. And then the vision, excuse me, the vision of the city to maintain its history and the true commitments that we have in our tradition, those kinds of things that make it the place that it is, the successful place that we love, and to maintain that as we move forward. And then just digging a little bit deeper, we're looking at the priorities, the things we wanted to make sure we were paying attention to and keeping an eye on. Again, you'll see these throughout our MCA's. They're not, not surprising when we look at the issues that we've been identifying and dealing with when it comes to our planning. As noted here, economic development, facilities, infrastructure, revenue resources, equipment, programming, planning, and customer service. Those are the big priorities that you'll see in every single one of our issues that are in that plan. As we talked about preparing, these are just, along the bottom are just some samples of the plans that are listed here. We've based our strategic plan on facts and data, previous planning processes, so that we can be confident in the assumption and ranking when it comes to issues, and how we can plan on tackling those issues as well. We've got, since then, we've had the Farmers Market Economic Impact Study, which was completed, which gives us more information. We've also had our Long Range Financial Plan that the Finance Department is working on is coming along. And then additionally, the Farmers Market Commission is working on a strategic plan as well that will help to inform some of the issues that the city sees, and then to continue to maintain the vitality of our market as well. So we have quite the library of plans to work from, which is nice. So specifically for this planning process, if you remember, I'll just give a quick, quick overview of the different documents we have in place. We began with our operational overview, which is a catalog of the day-to-day activities that just maintain what we're doing as it is right now. That led to the overall City of Moscow Strategic Plan, which is a compilation of all the departments and divisions' plans, which is a pretty hefty document. That document was then reviewed by council, and that's when we determined our major challenge areas, and that was in the spring of 2015 that we talked about that. From those major challenge areas, or pardon me, from those issues, we determined... those down into two, pardon me, three tiers for each. Leading from that, we said, "Okay, next steps," as we're going to work on variance reporting, which is, tonight is the first iteration of that process. Currently, we're looking at a quarterly report system, three of those four quarters would focus on the actions and strategies, those are those tasks that we said we would take on within the year, and then an annual report that rolls all of that up into how it's affected the goals and objectives, and how we've actually started to make some progress towards the issues. So, this is our November quarterly actions and strategies report. As I just discussed, these are those external MCAs, we've got tier one, two, and three. Tier one are the highest importance, and those are the ones we'll focus on this evening for review. I've also included, we'll go through the, excuse me, the internal ones here in a moment, but I've also included any goals that were remaining from the previous year, as you may remember, we adjusted from a goal-setting process to the strategic planning process, and so we'll update on that last piece after we get through the external and internal MCAs here. I'll also highlight, there are a few items that came into discussion with the potential GO bond process, I'll highlight those few extra items as well, so you have an idea where we're at with those. So, deteriorating pavement conditions, as we've already discussed this evening, infrastructure needs in the community are deteriorating at a rate that we're not able to maintain and repair. The issue specifically talks about current funding levels, the amount of funding needed to maintain the roadways that we have in place, the issues of the effect of public perception and public safety, and then also as they plan to economic development efforts as well, as we look at image building, tourism, job growth, and those types of things. Work today on this particular issue is, consisted of researching and implementing a pavement management software system, that's Cartograph, I think if I'm saying that right, Les. They've done quite a bit of work on that. Some of the work that's been in progress is then to refine the treatment parameters, looking at different treatment plans, and how that could be implemented in the next couple of years. One thing to note on Public Works' actions and strategies, we mentioned that our actions and strategies are typically a year-long, because of some of Public Works' projects, they expand beyond a year in many instances, so you'll see some different years here for them. And then pending is to start implementation of the program that's defined and researched, and then, of course, look at the results of that and how that works, and then Kentucky's study on the benefits, we make sure that the program's working, it's doing what we want to do, and that's the direction we want to continue. This is an item that I was happy to work on this last year, declining enrollment at the University of Idaho negatively impacts Moscow. We talk quite a bit how, as Councilmember Steve just mentioned, having that property here is quite a benefit for us, but looking as the U of I is Moscow's primary economic engine, looking at the different drivers in the economy that the U of I brings to us, and knowing that as enrollment increases, so does the benefits to Moscow. So, some of the things we did this year were, I'm going to go start from the bottom and work up, we developed a communication and collaboration strategy, and we refer to that now as the CUSP branding project, and that's a community/university strategic partnership that wrapped up just this last August, and we were able to roll that out. In the bottom right corner on the slide here, that's one of the ads that we're using for the City of Moscow with that branding message, and that's in the Visitor's Guide for the Chamber that will be coming out end of November, I believe. So, it's giving us some new tools to work on more consistently and creatively representing Moscow, not just as a city but as a community, but also maintaining our own identity in there, so that's exciting. Also, in the last year, the Partnership for Economic Prosperity Organization has been formed, and with the PEP organization coming on board, we see some opportunities for partnerships on some of our actions and strategies that will help us meet these goals and objectives. This item here is to look at some data and the economic impact of the U of I on the local economy, so we can start analyzing and determining how we can best support them. Also with our, PEP will be a big part in the CUSP branding initiatives, I believe, as we move forward, so we've got some opportunities coming there, and I believe end of November, the Executive Director will be joining the organization, so that will be great. As Gary mentioned, we have had over the last year, some things come up and change a little bit, in reference to the inadequate law enforcement radio infrastructure, just in the past year, we've had Chief Frye join us as chief with David Duke's retirement, and then we also had a captain hiring process. So, with those things, they've done a bit of work on that, but some of these things have been rescheduled, particularly, we're looking at also alternative repeater options for all public safety radios, not necessarily just law enforcement, and it's discussions of different technical aspects, such as number of channels required, repeater options, and those types of things. So, those discussions are moving forward, but some of these items have been delayed a bit over the past year, so. Deteriorating waste collection system, this issue starts by explaining that 60% of the city's 84 miles of sanitary sewer mains are clay or concrete pipes, which require enhanced maintenance, subject to collapse, inflow, and infiltration, all sorts of exciting things there. So, just knowing that we have a structure that is starting to deteriorate, and that we need to pay proper attention to that, Public Works has done a lot of work in looking at the prioritization, looking at replacement factors, taking inventory of the mains that we have in place, which has all been completed, and then they'll start to identify different estimates and options for addressing those as they move forward, coordinating with the Water and Streets Division, and then, I think the pending is for next year in April, actually, and we're still on track for that, looking at different project designs on how we'll attack these 60% of mains that are deteriorating, so. Looking also, I believe, the goal there is the 200,000 feet of antiquated sewer main by 2055, so that's our target for...
Well, I'll be an old guy if I'm still alive, but...
Little bit at a time, right? Little bit at a time. Insufficient revenues jeopardizing service levels, this, again, Gary spoke to this a bit with his discussion of the Piper Jaffrey contract a moment ago, this is again looking at the level of service that we're trying to provide, and looking at the revenues we have available to provide that service. We've done quite a few things, really, the goal or the actions and strategies have been directed at improving relationships with our legislators, providing better information, becoming a better resource when they're talking about such things as local option tax or URA issues as they go to the state legislature. This year, we've done quite a bit, we're looking at, as Gary mentioned, we've got a technical advisory team to discuss the bond presentation and education process, which will be considerable, given the different projects that we have that could potentially be directed for us to pursue. We have, for our legislators, we've hosted some town hall meetings at City Hall, and after the November 8 election, we look forward to hosting our state-elected officials to get together with them before they head down to Boise to start that relationship-building process. Association of Idaho Cities is a great organization, that we take advantage of their events as well in June and in January, and in the end of January, we'll be joining them for the Day at the Legislature again. And then we've also got, I think, believe Gary's attending the AIC Legislative Summit, and then we've got different staff members that are on technical advisory teams for the AIC as well. And then coming up just this next Sunday, we have the Northern Idaho Legislative Tour, which our Chamber of Commerce is putting together for us, and we're also looking at participating in Chamber Legislative Committee, and then Chamber Days at the Legislature, I think, is past already, that's one we'd...
Coming up in January.
Coming up, okay, thank you, I didn't put a date on that one, I couldn't remember. Several activities coming up in the next few months, especially as the legislative session kicks into gear. Let's see, looking at our declining employment base, this goes back to some of those priorities and trends that we are noticing and want to be mindful of. Moscow's economy, as outlined in the issue, has been slowly declining for the past decade, causing an erosion of employment numbers since 2003, and then is further impacted by the 2007 Great Recession, so those are some of the things we're feeling when it comes to this issue. With the development of PEP, that Palouse Economic Partnership, we look forward to the different opportunities we'll have with them to discuss the issue, look at different ways we can address that as we move forward, and the bulk of the work in this specific issue has been addressed through building the PEP partnership and organization in the past year, so. Looking at those internal areas, we've got four specific ones we'll speak to, and then we'll get on to the potential GO bond projects. Top three tiers here, and like I said, we'll talk about the top tier. Our first, insufficient law enforcement staffing to meet community demand, this issue spoke directly to our need for a forensics detective, and then Detective Journice joined us in January of last year, and this is a great news story by Ms. Chelsea over here, it was really neat and exciting to have her do that. When Detective Journice joined us, we had a forensic need for examinations, we were running into just not having enough officer hours or expertise to deal with some things that were causing lags and sending different cases for prosecution, evidence issues, losing some backlog surges and things like that, we just didn't have the resource power to take care of that. So, what we've done since then is, we've seen some great achievements, we've looked at a couple of cases that have been sent to prosecution, we've partnered with agencies throughout the region to assist in their ability to investigate cases and send them through the system as well. So, we've got two in particular that were child pornography cases that were prosecuted and led to, excuse me, not prosecuted, but led to guilty pleas in the area, some of which was information that dated from 30 years ago, so some good successes there, and that team, I think, has done a really good job of bringing the detective in and getting some success out of that, so. Looking at this deteriorating substandard PD building, that internal infrastructure piece, that will be great to explain to people as we move forward. This item, we have worked with some consultants and folks at the PD, one of those technical advisory teams that Gary spoke about, in options for citing, for location, what a facility could look like, what it needs to look like, it's been helpful to have our facilities plan in place, as we refer back to that. And then we'll also have to look, as we move forward, you know, Public Relations Campaign, if this is something that council directs us to include, that how do we get that education out there so people understand the need and can see how it could benefit them as a citizen, not just the organization? I think that was a great point that was made earlier, so. This one will keep going, December again will be when we have the information put together for council consideration. There's a lot of actions and strategies for this one, for the fleet facility, and it ties right into our next issue as well, this is our inadequate fleet facility, that's our city shop, and that's where our fleet services are maintained, as well as our Parks and Recreation Shop and several other operations, so they've done a tremendous amount of work in evaluating the current facility, looking at what a facility would need to look like to meet the needs both now and into the future, and they'll continue to do that process. There's a workshop, I believe, Thursday this week as well to continue that, Wednesday, pardon me, Wednesday, so they're continuing to review that facility and look at the needs, and then we'll begin developing a plan and recommendations for where they think they need to go in the future. Very similar, inadequate shop workspace, our Parks and Rec folks put this issue forward, and they're working with the Public Works folks on that facility to look at just what does that look like to meet their needs now and into the future. Also looking at some other facilities we have in place, to see if there's any way to repurpose or reuse things, and we'll continue that discussion as we complete this first phase of workshops that they're working through now. So, these, on the left-hand column here, there you've got the police facility, street maintenance, and revenue limitations, and these are some of the tier one items that we've given you an update on, and then we have some tier two and tier three that are potential GO bond MCAs, and that's downtown and community center improvements, fire trucks, and Phase One park development, I'll go through those three quickly so you have an idea of where we're at. Our aging downtown infrastructure is really looking at the downtown core on Main Street, the last real infrastructure project that was completed there was in 1981, that was a local improvement district, and that was the result of the aggregate intersections and some things like that, that have continued to, after 35 years, have begun to deteriorate and are in need of some attention. We also look at, given the value of our downtown area with the Farmers Market there, the different events that we're hosting, and this, the gathering place that it's really always been is, continued to be, is looking at evaluating the infrastructure that's in place there for the different needs and the different uses that we have, and then with the technical advisory teams, looking at what it looks like to really get that up to speed so it meets the needs of what we have going on now, from both, for instance, an events perspective and then as well as a safety perspective. As part of the Farmers Market Commission's strategic plan also, they're doing a good evaluation, or look to do a good evaluation of how that specifically meets the market needs, so as we get all these different players to the table, they can say, "Okay, this is what everybody needs, and we can build a plan that makes the most sense," again, the best bang for our buck, and making sure that we can meet all those stakeholder needs. Our fire apparatus, these are our fire trucks, and we've got, our fleet is aging and is beyond the scheduled replacement date for replacement, so one thing we've done here with our technical advisory team specifically is talking with our Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, and the users, the end users, the actual volunteers that use these pieces of equipment regularly, we started a fairly inclusive process, Gary went out and spoke with the company as a whole, excuse me, the group as a whole, gave a background of the history of the fire truck purchases, the budget implications that we deal with, the potential for a GO bond and how that could work, and then what we plan to do in the future as we look at these things, what we could do in the future as we look at these projects. From there, we had Tyler Palmer from our Public Works, and Rick Benjamin from our fleet, speak with each individual company over the next few weeks, so they did a series of five or six different meetings to further talk about, "Okay, this is what the equipment could look like, what do you need, what's safe," to have those kinds of discussions, really make sure that the end users were able to define what kind of fire truck would work best for them, but also in keeping with, "Okay, what do we need that truck to do for the next 20 years regardless?" So, had quite a few conversations, which I think was a real benefit, helped the fire department to understand where we're coming from and to also have their opinions heard, so we wrap that up in September, I believe, and I think the specification for the vehicle is coming along nicely, if it's not already completed, and that will be prepared for the December presentation of the potential bond projects. And this one ties right back into our, as we continue to try to provide services and do replacements and maintenance and things like that, our service growth is just outpacing our resources, and this is a good reference for us as we look at the bond education process and what we will need to do, and what we'll need to focus on to make sure folks understand where we're coming from with some of these things, so. And specifically, the strategic planning process has really helped us to refine and report back on these items, the infrastructure, the trucks, equipment, all of those things. And so, as we look forward to continuing to present on the variance reports and the quarterly reports that we're kicking off tonight, also looking at, "Okay, what's next year's strategic plan, actions and strategy list looks like, and we can move from there." So, we've done quite a bit of work on this item in pulling together the strategic plan particularly, and we look forward to continuing that. So, and then, just quickly, we'll talk about the council goals prior to strategic planning, some of these were still in the works, that's really small font, and I apologize for that. On the left side, these are items that were implemented into the strategic plan process, and specifically, it's entryway beautification and then expansion of the downtown area on Main Street, and then developing a community relations plan as well. Those items have been pulled over into the appropriate departments in the strategic planning process and are continuing to be addressed. And then on the right-hand side, the exciting side, we've got developing a facilities master plan that addresses current and future city operations and space needs, that was completed in December of 15, develop and implement a strategy for ball fields, completed in May of 2016, not just a strategy, but the ball fields are up and running and are beautiful, of course. And then research the siting construction of a permanent downtown restroom facility, construction began today on the downtown restroom facility, and then transition from our annual goal-setting process to our long-range strategic planning process, and this report really kind of kicks off that completion, as well as we continue to look at our variance reporting and continuing on with our strategic planning. So, with that, if you have any questions...
I've got a couple of points I'd like to make, Jen. In our strategic planning process, and I love this process too, because it really defines things and it sets the stage for the direction we're heading as a city, so we're all working together to accomplish those things. But a couple of the points that I think have changed and we need to update, that's the U of I numbers, since the declining enrollment, that has stopped and changed and actually has improved, so we actually need some kind of an update on that, as well as the declining employment has changed as well because of big players like Schweitzer Engineering that has added more volume, and we're getting other players in our town too, like Gritman, for example, that Medical Center is going to be opening in February, and that's going to add additional employment as well. And a thought came to me on our police station, every one of us here can understand why we need a new police station, but I got to tell you something, I would guess the majority of people in our town have never been to our police station, and want to know why in the world would we need one? So, that is a point that we're going to have to point out and address in a very elegant way, and I think Captain touched a little bit on this earlier, but the thing of it is, is most people, like I said, have not been to the police station unless they've had unfortunate circumstance of being picked up by one of our cops for some reason or had some issue to deal with, so we need to, this is our bond issue, we... most people, like I said, have not been to the police station unless they've had unfortunate circumstance of being picked up by one of our cops for some reason or had some issue to deal with. So we need to, this, our bond issue, we need to be able, so people, and we're going to have to come up with a way when we start doing our public presentations, Gary, that we can address that. Because I think that's something that, you know, all of us up here understand that, you folks over there understand that, but there's thousands of people out there that might not know it, and that's the message that we're going to have to get out. Why are we doing this? How come we need that? I mean, what's the big deal? And so that's going to be an important thing for us, and so we're going to have to come up with a solution for that. And this legislative tour that's coming up next week, and I know there's going to be more information that probably Gina, as well as you are going to speak about, but it's our opportune time for things to talk to some of these folks about the local option tax, which is consistently tough for us to get through with our legislators. And those are the sort of things, as we may as a group and each one of us, because there's going to be a bunch of us out there, we need to take the opportunity to, by God, never give up, and keep the charge up and make sure that they understand it so we get a chance to talk to these folks about what is our needs, because we are a town, as far as I'm concerned. We are as important a town as any town in this state. So questions for, that was an excellent report, too, incidentally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments for Jen?
Yeah. My, I saw in the very small print down on the website about the website being, I had wanted you to.
I did, when, yeah, I got to the end and said the update on the community relations plan. That's one of the pieces that we've rolled into the strategic planning piece. We also, we've increased our social media as an update to the action and strategies. We've added Instagram in the past year. So we have Instagram, LinkedIn, Facebook, and Twitter now. We also have our website redesign process. We went out for an RFQ, and we actually have 20 total responses to review. So we're plowing through those, and so we can get to a decision on who will help us with the redesign of our website. Yeah.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. An item that I don't know how it got past us, but one of the major challenge areas is mislabeled, deteriorating waste collection system. I know it was parenthetical that that was sewer in one of the items on there, but further down, when you got into the paper itself, you had to start reading it to figure it out. It's not a waste system, it's a wastewater collection system. I mean, that's the terminology. Gary's looking at you, Les. It's the terminology that I'm used to seeing used, and I'm not sure why we just didn't say what it was. It's not changing anything except making the heading correct.
If I may, I think in the original text, it probably did say wastewater system, somewhere along the line in the translation. I think something just got dropped. So it's, yeah, it is the wastewater, it's the sewer collection system.
Probably a too-long line, and some word had to come out, and they took that one.
We can factor it back in.
Mr. Mayor, in respect to your police station outreach, there, there's no reason why we can't do like a video walking tour of the existing police station and put that on YouTube and the city's website. So it doesn't, if you've ever had a tour of the police station, you can see how cramped and small it is, and that could be, the public could access that without showing off any evidence or anything.
You know what, we got a guy right here in our back room.
Yeah, I think Zach could do that, no problem.
It's a good idea, but we do need to get that out there some way so people can actually see that, that's a good point.
If I may, as our technical advisory committee that's working on public outreach, as soon as we get that sort of information, council gives us direction on it, then this group is working on all of those things, and I'm sure tours, there will be a list of tasks that the elected officials will have to participate in as well in order to get the word out. So it'll be a really comprehensive process.
Well, we're, the racehorses are up here, Gary, and I want to be the lead horse on this thing. I'm ready to go, so we got to take charges. Thank you very much, that wonderful report, Jen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will move on to item number eight, the multimodal transportation plan, public outreach report by Les McDonald. Les, you have the podium there.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert. One of those good plans that Jen just talked about is this guy right here, which is our Moscow on the Move multimodal transportation plans. Pretty good-sized document.
You know, Les, I got to tell you something. I read through that thing three times, and the more I read it, the better I like it, and especially chapter number five. It's gathering my favorite chapters of things.
For those of you that have not yet read chapter five, now you have something to look forward to, figure out what that is when you get there.
Well, this is, you know, this report that you're doing, this is a good report because, you know our friends on the Third Street and around that struggle sometimes with the good information that's been worked on for a number of years in this city, this is a good documentation, so I'll be looking forward to your presentation, Les.
Okay, well, the Planning and Zoning Commission has actually requested that I come visit them, something that we've been working on since September, and it's unfortunately had to be pushed back a couple of times, but it is going to happen this Wednesday. I hope I'm ready now. They've asked that I come and really just talk to them about what is in the multimodal plan. They have some newer membership on the commission, as we have on the council, that includes folks that were not here on those particular bodies when the plan was developed and when it was adopted. And so we thought it would be helpful for the council, and particularly for those of you that were not here during that process, if I talked a little bit about what is in the plan and really concentrate today on the public outreach component. There have been some folks that have, I guess, questioned about, you know, what was the public outreach? How did it come to be? How did the plan end up containing what it does contain? And I will agree with you, I think it is a good product, it is a good plan, I think it has a lot of good information within it, but folks don't always necessarily understand how documents of this type come to be. So a large part of that, of course, is public output, excuse me, public outreach and public input, I'll get the words together. This process, as is typical in most of our comprehensive plan development, does include or did include a lot of public involvement, and so I'm going to touch on that today. So the whole process started on our multimodal transportation plan, MMTP is how we abbreviate that, with an application for Local Highway Technical Assistance Commission funding, LTAC funding, actually was something that was recommended to us by the Idaho Transportation Department. They said, you know, you're applying for grants from us all the time, you really don't have a transportation plan, you got a lot of pieces, and it's in, you know, there's a chapter in your comprehensive land use plan, but you really should have a transportation plan. So apply for some funding, and we will help you fund it. So we applied back in February of 2009 through the LTAC program. We were selected for funding in July. A state-local agreement between the city and the state entities was authorized by the council in August of 2010. These things take a little time to put together. And after a selection process, we chose the firm of Nelson Nygaard and implemented a consultant agreement in November of 2011. That's when we got underway with the development of the plan, and ultimately, the plan was adopted by the council in July of 2014. So a little bit of a timeline to give you an idea of what the process is like. That November 11 to July 14 date gives you a little bit of an idea of how long these things take, and part of that is the public outreach, gathering all the information, absorbing it all, figuring out what they had to say, how does it affect what is being developed in the plan, what should be included in the plan, how do you deal with all the competing comments that we get? There's a lot of that. People like Plan A versus Plan B, and which one ultimately ends up in the document. So we had a number of components, and I'll talk about what those are. We had a steering committee, first off, that helped the technical folks to really chart the vision and the path of how we were going to progress in developing the plan. So here you see a list of all the different entities that were represented within the steering committee makeup.
Yeah, a total number of people, 20?
On the committee, 15, 16, somewhere in that range. There's a few here that are duplicative. The University of Idaho Finance, Facilities, and Engineering, there was somebody from each of those three groups within the university. I think we had, maybe individuals pretty much on the rest of this, of course, and staff support with the committee itself. So this really represents most of the folks that were there. You can see it's the broad spectrum, both in-city and external. ITD is there, the Mobility Task Force, as you'll recall, was a subcommittee of the Transportation Commission that really looked at accessibility and mobility throughout the community, and a short-lived group, ran about a year, year and a half. Of course, the chambers there, Parks and Rec, folks from the hospital, medical systems, fire departments, all of those good folks, including Disability Action Center. So that group was intended to provide the process with a good cross-section of the community and all the different perspectives that these folks all represent in all their constituency, if you will, to bring that information and that insight into the process. That group was supported by the technical advisory committee, mostly made up of city staff. We did have a couple of folks outside, U of I Parking, Transportation Services Manager, Carl Root, when he was here, and the Ginny Ford, who's now the Smart Transit Director. This group was the day-to-day nuts and bolts, how do we make it happen, how do we coordinate the meetings, those types of things, but also to bring forward the city's input and history and some of that type of information that may not be generally known to the rest of the steering committee members. Okay, so then the public outreach going out to the rest of the community beyond just what's represented in those individuals took many different forms. One of the first areas we dealt with had to do with transit. We implemented a transit survey process. So in the period of April 3 through the 6, four days in 2012, there were actually folks on the bus with surveys. And they would, you know, talk to folks on the writers and say, hey, are you interested in filling out a survey, helping us figure out what makes sense with transit within the community as part of the Moscow on the Move process? So with that, well, actually, even before we started that, they prepped for it. So they did an interview with the Argonauts, so there was a letter on the paper on campus. Most of the writers of the system are students or university-affiliated. There was an item in the newsletter with the Moscow Food Co-op, also in the newsletter for the Moscow School District, and then there were flyers posted all over the community, Friendship Square, of course, across the U of I campus, and again, also in the Co-op. So that was the information that was put out there leading up to the transit ride survey so folks would know, somebody's going to be on the bus, they're going to want to talk to you in that four-day period. During that four-day period, they were on board. They approached folks with this paper version of a survey and said, if you've got time on this 30-minute loop that you're making around the city, you know, take five minutes here and help us fill out the survey. If they were willing to do it and they had the time to finish it, excuse me, then that was done, and most of them were accomplished that way. If they didn't think they had time, you know, we offered to them, here's a paper version of the survey, if you'd like to take it home, we'll give you a prepaid self-addressed envelope so you can mail it back to the city. Or we also handed out a card that had a web address that said you could take it online if you prefer to do it that way. So out of that came information, like you see on this little graph here, one of many that's in the report, just talking about, you know, the person taking the survey, the respondent, what was their employment status, in this case, for the east route. A lot of part-timers, almost as many full-timers, see visitors, retirees, lots of college students, that type of thing. That's the kind of information they gathered, among many other areas within the survey. Overall, there were 294 surveys completed. Of those, 15 were mail-ins and three of them online, so most people did them, by far, the large majority did them on the bus at the time of the survey. And we had a 60% response rate, which is phenomenal.
It's high.
Yeah, very, very high. I think part of that is just having captive audience, right? You know, tell the bus driver, don't open the door yet, we're not quite done. You got time? But, yeah, it was, people were really willing to participate, so that was a very, very good response. We did a series of face-to-face type workshops. A lot of them took place actually right here in this room, first of them occurring on April 25. We had about 80 or 90 participants. This was a two, I think, a two-hour, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. type timeframe, similar to a lot of the workshops we do here in the city, you know, set up the boards and exhibits and have people can answer the questions, and you advertise it with press releases and put it on the websites, and people come in and they look at what you have and talk about their ideas and what works and what doesn't work, and those types of things. So that was the first of them. Pretty good turnout, actually. We then did something called a drop-in workshop, and this was actually a two-day, hands-on kind of event where you could come and go, or come at any time you want to, to participate. They did do some advanced work, some pre-scheduling of certain groups, some within the community and a portion of the Transportation Commission at certain times within that two-day period. Again, they did some interviews with the Daily News, the Argonauts to kind of spread the word, press releases with the Co-op and the School District Newsletter again. And then on October...
Excuse me, Les, what were the dates on those you just described?
October 9th and 10th, 2012, running from 10:00 a.m. in the morning till 7:00 p.m. at night. I think they took an hour lunch in the middle of the day, and they were in the back room of the One World Cafe. They just set up camp, in fact, this is a picture of them right here in that back room, and they just stayed there for those two days. People could come and go as they chose, spend as much time as they wanted to. We had boards out on the street, you know, people out there, say, hey, come on in, you know, drag them on in when things were slow, to try to get as much input and participation as possible. You can see here, they've got a lot of stuff laid out on the table. These are all exhibit boards here in the back with lots of different concepts and ideas and facts about the system and all those kind of things that readily available, they could pull up and show people. This map, you can't really see here, but it's covered in little bits of paper and dots and various things where people have put marks down and said, hey, you know, here's an area where I think there should be a better intersection, or, you know, we don't feel safe crossing the highway at this particular location, or whatever it may be. So a lot of information that was garnered through that outreach process, a lot of participation, again, 90 to 100 participants over those couple of days. The second true open house, again, here at City Hall, was much later in the process. This was April 1 of 2014, so this is getting on towards the end, but it was a little bit smaller participation, 40 folks, and this was more of a, how are we, how's it looking now? I mean, as we've gone through all the rest of these input processes and things with the city, what's it starting to look like? So that's what that one was. This is just an example, one of the comment cards, these were used in all the open houses and processes, that said, hey, you know, here's what we're doing, multimodal plan. There's some things here about, you know, what three projects, or would you propose are going to be the most important within the city, and folks have filled these out. A lot of them provided extra comments about, you know, specific things that they were interested in, in addition. So those were all consolidated and gathered up and assessed by the consultants, and then they took a look at, all right, what are the ideas? What are the issues? What are the concerns? So we can make sure we address these in the process. Now, it doesn't always mean that everything written down is included as a solution or a preferred option, but they're all addressed, and that's the intent, is to look at them and say, okay, you know, if you've got conflicting, obviously, one of those is going to come forward perhaps, and the other one may not. We also branched out pretty extensively into the social media area. We had a website, actually, there were a couple of websites, but one was a Facebook page that was built for the Moscow on the Move project, a little over 1,200 views of that particular site, which is not bad for, you know, that type of a webpage. We had a Twitter account, probably one of our first Twitter endeavors in the city. We actually ran from April of 12 through March of 14 as we were getting on towards the end of the process. Just an example here of some of the kind of things you see, you know, provide feedback on the draft plan, April 1 community open house, right there. So drop in at City Hall anytime between 5:00 and 6:00 or 8:00, I think it is, 5:00 and 8:00. So those are the type of things that, you know, just go out to our, I guess, younger generation that tends to live on these types of accounts, as compared to some of us older types that don't know, don't have a Twitter account, internet. So we reached out that way as well. We also had an online survey. So if you went into the website, there was an option, and we encourage people to do this, to go onto the site. It was run from that June 12 through October of 12 timeframe, where there was a series of questions about transportation and all its facets within the community. And we had 417 responses, folks that came in and took that survey as well. So again, more information, this particular graph here just happens to reflect some of the various commute modes. You can't really read them here, not the best quality PDF, but essentially, the left-hand column, these are the folks that drive alone. Their primary, most people drive alone, is their primary commute, then there's transit and bikes and walking, car pools and such things there. So then, again, all this information is within the plan and the kind of things that were gathered through the were gathered through the process. We had the consultant do what we called stakeholder interviews, or really face-to-face, one-on-one type interviews, again, April through July of 12. 20 different stakeholders identified, there's a list of some of them, included the Chambers, some of the healthcare folks, Active Living Task Force, that's a group that I hadn't mentioned before tonight. That was another entity that came to life. Jim actually helped lead that one along and shepherd it in its time here, that looked at things that could improve our overall lifestyle and our health and mobility and those types of aspects. So they were part of that process. We had bike and pet advocates, school representatives, Parks and Rec, all types of folks. So these were more of the in-depth, you know, let's spend 20 minutes, one-on-one, talk about what you see as issues, concerns, where we're going, what we should be doing. The group, the consultant came and participated in a couple of meetings with entities here at the city, so Planning and Zoning Commission, similar to what I'll be doing on this coming Wednesday night, came in and made a presentation to the commission about what we were all about, what we were doing, and gathered input there. Also with the Transportation Commission, same type of process. There were times when we had folks out at the farmer's market, sitting on a table, you know, talking to people about transportation and trying to get them to take surveys and provide us information and show up at meetings. So we did that a number of times. Of course, we had press releases all the way through the process. Here's one of them for that April 1 workshop that was here in the council chambers.
You know, Les...
That's it, so questions?
Well, here's the interesting thing about this, and this multi-modal transportation plan, and I don't know how many councillors up here have read this and looked through this document, but I tell you what, I've got this at-home, nice, thick notebook, and I love getting up at 4:30 in the morning, drinking coffee and pondering through the chapters on this thing, because, man, you know, we've had, the steering committee had between 16 and 20 people, you had all kinds of various groups throughout this whole community, a number of open workshops. Out of those workshops, 168 response cards, and I'm actually a numbers guy, and I got to share with you, you know, we do have a few folks that are a little bit concerned about the Third Street Bridge. Now, those 168 cards, we had four comments on that, which was 2.4%. And I got to share with you, the other 98% of the comments had nothing to do with that. And I find that intriguing. That is, that's an excellent document. The more I read it, and I think it is a well-thought-out, excellent plan. So for those out there in TV land that haven't read it, I would urge you to read it, because, boy, it can't get, it doesn't get any better than that. The work was, the collaborative work with a number of different groups and all across segments in our fine town, that really put it together well. That's my point of view. And so I'm glad that you're going out and doing this outreach to be and z and other folks, you know, because those folks just have to have a chance to really know that we had some great people really work on this thing, got it done good. Walter?
And it can be found on the website?
It is available on our website, Public Works page, so it can be downloaded directly.
Other comments or questions for Les? Thank you, Les, that was excellent.
I'm looking forward to your presentation.
You're welcome.
Let's see, we've got reports, folks, we've got an executive session that we'll call here in a minute, but let's go through the reports real quick. That's the end of the regular session, I'll start with you, Jim.
Okay, admin, pretty much everything's been on the regular agenda, and my two other meetings in Lewiston with Clearwater Resource Conservation Development Council and SEDA were both canceled last week, so I have really nothing to report, sir.
Okay, we'll go to Gina.
Two-thirds of my meetings happened this week, so I don't have anything to report to you yet, but I will, at our next council meeting. Thursday is the National Christmas Tree coming in through town, 2:00 to 2:30 on the Kibbe, well, it'll be here longer than a half an hour, but Kibbe Dome parking lot, Christmas Tree and...
West Side?
The Idaho Potato. Do you know the location at West Side?
I think it's in the main parking lot where the pre-game festivities happen.
Okay.
They're both too big to mix.
It's pretty big. It's a giant potato. So, anyway, that'll be fun, that's this Thursday.
I'll be there.
And then this weekend, starting at 6:30 on Sunday morning, is the North Idaho Legislative Turkeys. It'll be great. It'll be from the 13th through the 15th, and we will have our newly-elected and our sitting legislators in our community. We get to show them all that's great about us.
And I got to throw something out here real quick, because I was, you know, I kept saying, well, okay, where's this guy's, where's this guy's? Well, guess what? The election is tomorrow, and so some of these people are waiting to make confirmation about coming here, they may not get elected. So, so I got kind of a kick out of that, so we got to kind of actually wait to find out till Wednesday, who may or may not be coming, right? Then we can have the plan set up.
Yeah, and I do have details for select few.
And that's going to be, and that's going to be a fun night, because we're all going to be there.
It will be a fun, it'll be a fun three days.
Yeah.
It'll be a good time. That's all I have.
John?
Well, the Tree Commission met, however, with the Tree Commission report, everything was covered fairly well, so I don't need to go over that. And then the last month, Human Rights Commission, one of the most interesting things about that was the Latacuvry Center gave a report on crisis intervention, intervention training, and mental health problems, de-escalation situations, and probably a report on the center's effectiveness, which was good. And then probably the most interesting and was that Moscow City Police, whenever they have this training, tries to send four officers. So eventually, all of the officers in Moscow's police department will have an opportunity to receive some training, so that if they run into a mental health situation, they can de-escalate it without making it worse. And I think we've all seen some of the people walking around town, especially during the warmer months, that can use a little de-escalation every now and then, without causing any harm to themselves and anybody else. And other than that, that's it.
Okay, Art?
I've got nothing for you this time.
Okay, Catherine?
I have the exploratory bike sharing meeting, had the second one, Jim went to that, and Tyler came for a little while, and we are kind of at this place of realizing that it'll be, we're looking at the entities that actually provide services for communities. So it would be, like, there's a company called Zagster that I'm researching, and we're going to try to get information to see how that will work. Well, we're going to research them to see if that would be a viable option in our community. So it wouldn't be publicly funded, it wouldn't be a private corporation.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, on October 20, Pback met. Two things, on their agenda of interest, I believe, was a report from Steve Robichon about 2016 weather and Pback pumping. Unless you hadn't thought about it at all, you would immediately realize that weather totally impacts the amount of water we pump around here, how much it rains, how little it rains, how hot it is, how cold it is. So the relationships are dramatic. Secondly, most of you probably have heard that Steve Robichon is stepping back, not totally down, but he's wanting to retire, move to Arizona. He has said that he will do some part-time work to support Pback because of his history, knowledge, technical expertise, but we're currently running an advertisement to fill his position.
He's certainly been a good guy on that.
He has, he's done a great job. On October the 25th, Les McDonald and I went down to Boise to the first Association of Idaho Cities Municipal Water Summit. It was an all-day production. Several items within that of interest were a presentation on federal and state water quality regulatory issues. Another item was managing Idaho's water resources with current water issues facing the state across the different regions, administrative tools the department uses to manage Idaho's water resources. And then lunch, the chairman of the Idaho Water Resources Board, Roger Chase, discussed ways that cities can work with the board on municipal water issues as well as various grants, resources available to assist cities. It is interesting to go to these, the southeast Idaho people are totally knowledgeable about the Snake River aquifer situation. We know very little about it. We sit there kind of trying to learn and figure out what their big problem is, and the same is true on the opposite side, other end of the state, in that very few people have any idea of what the Palouse Basin's challenges are or the Rathrum Aquifer, and all of these are different, and they have different problems, different issues, and different solutions available to them. The other thing that we did, we had regional roundtables, and at that, regional representatives were elected to serve as leadership for a new entity called the Association of Idaho Cities Water Users Group. I was elected from Region 2 to that, and looking forward to starting those meetings. So that was good. One last thing, if I may, Jim Boland, did you want to make an announcement about a 70-story building and the fire department?
Yeah, well, on Wednesday, some volunteer fire department people and I are going to sign up to do this stair climb thing in Seattle for about 70 floors and raise money for leukemia. And so the sign-up for that is on Wednesday morning, and so we'll all sign up together at a undisclosed location with a secure server, so, because apparently it's quite competitive to get in there, and if, you don't want it, you don't want it to crash when you...
You don't do this in your shorts and running shoes?
No, you have to wear fireman gear. You have to wear boots and coat and an air tank and...
75 pounds.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's that much, but...
You will by about the 65th floor, you'll think it's 150.
This guy will make it happen.
We'll find out, I guess.
And you're taking pledges or something?
Yeah, anybody, and I'll probably put something up on social media about that, but anybody wants to sponsor me a dollar a floor to do that, I'll be happy to accept that pledge for, on behalf of the fire department. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gina's in.
Okay, Walter, you done? You signed it up?
Done.
You brought it up. Come on, I'll be a cheapskate, give us 72 bucks.
I'll talk about pledging, I'm not going to talk about doing it.
Well, see, well, that's the difference, folks, right there. Anyway, we'll go on, and I'll talk about the Arts Award on October 27 at the 1912 Center. It was a fun night, Jim Boland and his wife, Gina and her husband were there, we had a very nice time, and it's kind of fun with the arts folks, because when we started off and I got a chance, you know, our own world was within them four walls, and I liked doing that, it was a wonderful evening, we had a really good time with it. And then, as Walter said earlier tonight, don't forget to vote tomorrow. It's everybody's God-given right, think and vote, get out there and vote, doesn't matter who you vote for, get out and vote. Use your conscience. Now, Gary, do you have something you want to discuss before we...
The only announcement I wanted to make was that you've probably seen a news crew around town. There is a Russian TV station that has been interviewing people on the streets, interviewed the mayor this morning. Will be looking, I think, setting up camp outside one of the voting places to kind of see what's going on. I know that they're going to interview our Public Works Department. Had a lot of questions about how does a town of 25,000 people run as opposed to a city of 4 million? Asked questions about parking, utility bills, property taxes, things like that. So it'll be interesting to see where that goes, but they're here till Wednesday, I believe. But anyway, if you see them out there, it's, that's what's going on.
Okay, well, with that, I would look for an adjourn to the executive session for Idaho Code 74-206, 1C and 1F, and at the end, when we're done with that, this meeting will not reconvene.
Salute.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Art and a second by Gina, I will start the roll with Walter.
Hi.
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 Okay, we are closed, folks, and we are headed for executive session.